I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To their republic.
Which is.
Stand. One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible with liberty.
Liberty.
Justice.
Justice for all. Thank you all. Do I have, has everyone reviewed the minutes for the May meeting and does anyone want to offer? Offer to accept those minutes? Look, they look good to me. I didn't see anything. Anyone else? Should we approve them? May minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First up on tonight's agenda is 200 South Itham Avenue. It's a preliminary land development plan. And Nick, and before you guys get into your, your end of the presentation, would you mind if, if I ask staff for a little bit of a reference point because we, this is, there are so many iterations of things that have happened here. You've been between before shade tree, board of commissioners. There's, you know, the density modification issue here. And I think it would be for me anyway, it would be really nice to just have, you know, able to take a look back at what's, what, at what got us to this point now. So Nick, if that's okay with you, I would like, I would just appreciate if somebody from staff took a shot at that. And I have a couple of little things that I'd like to add as well, but anyone out there who wants to just put, put this in its proper historical place?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have been struggling to get on in a minute. I, I will try again with my computer, but right now I'm on my phone. So just to give some kind of context, there were a couple of things that, I don't know if Steve's on or not, and I'm sure he'll want to have his, his say at it, but the planning commission has looked at this for probably four or five months now. And one of the things that has gotten a lot of attention in those four or five months is the issue of sidewalks. And I just thought it would be helpful to know that while the planning commission has reviewed the plan, the planning commission has made recommendations on various things. The board of commissioners has also been active on this project. The applicant had to go in front of the board of commissioners for a conditional use to be able to utilize the same density that was available for the rest of the trianon development. And as part of that conditional use approval, the board of conditioners issued, our board commissioners issued a condition that the applicant must either install sidewalks on the east side of South Itham, or if, and the township has to cooperate and help the applicant get the necessary easements. But in the absence of getting the necessary easements, the applicant has to contribute a fee to the township sufficient to design and install those sidewalks. So there, you have some direction. Normally the planning commission's job is to make recommendations to the board of commissioners who hasn't had an opportunity to review the project at this point. But here, the board of commissioners has reviewed the project, at least in terms of, of the sidewalks. It understood that the sidewalks were going to be an issue. And it issued that condition. And I wasn't sure that the planning commissioners were aware of that. And I think it's a good thing to know about.
Well, thank you, Mary, because I, you know, when I looked at the waivers that are being requested and waiver number two says to omit the installation of sidewalks along a minor collector street, parentheses, South Itham Avenue. I was, you know, I, I started to get confused because that is in reference to the internal sidewalks in the, in the proposed development. So they're not asking for a sidewalk waiver on South Itham. So, and Nick, you know, if, if you, what you're hearing, that if, if you have anything, any sentiments or, you know, adjustments to what you're hearing, please, you know, please feel free to offer those as, as we go through this.
You may just recall the sidewalk, just to get back to it. At our last time before the planning commission, the planning commission agreed for the waiver to the internal sidewalks in lieu of the fact that the applicant was going to pay or install sidewalks on the east side of South Itham. And I guess the only thing to add to Mary's is that if we don't install the sidewalks, we have to make a contribution for the cost of those sidewalks, which the township could apply, I think, to any project they wanted. Didn't necessarily have to be to South Itham, but I think that's the sentiment is that it would be applied eventually to South Itham.
But I mean, I mean, excuse me, go ahead, Mary.
I just wanted to also make clear that there have been times when it's been stated that the, that the condition regarding sidewalks on South Itham was some kind of trade off for a waiver of the sidewalks internally, and that was never the case.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add to what Nick said, so again, to reiterate, as Mary said, if the sidewalks, if easements can't be obtained, builder has to provide the funds for design and construction of the sidewalks. But it would be for South Itham. It wouldn't be able to be used anywhere else in the township.
Okay.
It would stay in a fund untouched until such time that that, that work would begin.
And so it's fair enough to say that the, the applicant is willing to put the sidewalks in as long as they can work through the, the red tape of doing that?
That's correct. And if we can't work through the red tape or the township can't work through the red tape, then we would make the contribution.
Okay. I just wanted that to be clear to the rest of the commission because I think it's an important point from the developer's point of view. So anyway, Nick, that's that. I mean, how do you want to pursue?
You know, there's really only, I mean, I can go through quickly just where, you know, a little bit of the history. And then I think there's only one really remaining issue that needs to be discussed. I mean, we, as Mary said, you've seen this probably for several months. And we've worked through most of the comments with township staff. As you see, the review letters are pretty scarce. And there's only one other item. There's were two waivers. One waiver was for the internal sidewalks, which at last meeting, planning commission stated they would be amenable to. And then the other conditions are typical 500 foot monument requirement, which the applicants already submitted in aerial, which we feel should suffice for that. And then there's one remaining issue, and that's regarding the angle of the road that Damon mentions in his comment letter. And I think that's really the only other, you know, issue that's really before this board that he decided and.
And there's only one other item. There's two waivers. One waiver was for the internal.
Okay. Do any of the, are any, any other planning commissioners have, you know, something to say at this point? Now that we've sort of broken the ice on the sidewalk issue?
I just have a quick question about the sidewalk issue. What kind of red tape are you experiencing or expect to experience? So that, and will we be made aware of that? Because I think a lot of us residents here living off of South Itham think that the sidewalks are going in when this construction project starts.
Well, I, I can answer that, Liz. So again, easements are required. I think there's one permanent easement, but the rest are temporary construction easements. So we need to work through that with the residents. I, I wouldn't call it red tape. It's just part of the process. So the developer, you know, from our, from his, him appearing here and in meetings is fully prepared to install those sidewalks. We have plans. They've been a, they've been amended to, you know, provide a more consistent path through there. So the developer's intent is to install them. The township's job is to obtain easements. So we've had a few town hall meetings specifically with the affected residents, you know, just those properties. And I will be meeting one-on-one with those residents. I did place some paint marks on their properties. They had asked like to get an idea of the impact as to where it would go. And they all have copies of the plan. So there's a, were some paint marks made to show, you know, the edge of sidewalk and edge of easement as edge of temporary construction easement. So just to be sure, when I talk to those residents, I don't say that this sidewalk is going in because I don't know, you know, we have to obtain the easements. It's, it's not a fait accompli at this point. We have to get the easements. And if we don't, then the money goes into escrow and all that good stuff. But that, that's where we stand.
So you're saying these easements are just temporary construction easements? You are still operating the sidewalks within the right of way, correct?
Correct. I think there might be one spot where it pops or it borders it or it comes out. But the vast majority are temporary construction easements to allow the workers to get through. And there's a little bit of grading to be done.
Understood. Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
All right. Thanks so much for calling. Have a great time.
So Nick, well, actually Roger, are you okay? Are Nick's, are you okay with Nick's comments about where we vetted what you deal with normally sufficiently?
Yeah. The only comment that I have is to clarify the request for the waiver for the sidewalks. There, there's actually two waivers that I think are necessary just procedurally is the, the code requires that sidewalks be put along the frontage of South Itham. So the proposed sidewalks that are going to be the offsite improvement are actually across the street from there. So I think procedurally, they still need a waiver for the sidewalk on their side of South Itham on the frontage. And then there's also the second waiver for the sidewalk on the interior cul-de-sac. So I think they need both of those waivers. And, and Mary, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think procedurally and administratively, they should probably be two separate waivers. And then the waiver of the 500 feet of the site that I have no objection to.
I would certainly recommend that in granting a waiver for the sidewalks along South Itham, you make it clear that the waiver is being granted from the requirement to construct sidewalks along the road frontage subjects expressly to compliance with the conditions set forth in the conditional use approval of the board of commissioners.
I agree.
Okay, great.
I believe that again, just to, I think the board voted on that issue last, or last time before it, but.
I think the board voted on the issue of the waiver of the internal sidewalks. I don't think there was ever a waiver granted for sidewalks along South Itham, if I recall correctly.
And remember, this is the, would be the west side of South Itham because.
Right. I understand, but I don't think there was a waiver granted for sidewalks along the, I think the only waiver that the planning commission made a recommendation on was the internal sidewalks.
Remember. Yeah. And the sidewalks on the west side would be a short distance connected to nothing, you know, so I think that was part of the reason for the waiver as well.
Correct. But I think administratively, we just like to wrap that up.
Yeah. So Mr. Chairman, whenever you're done or whatever, we have the one opinion by the one recommendation. I would just request as, you know, based on what Roger said and the solicitor said, we also ask the planning commission to provide an opinion, a recommendation, one way or the other on those sidewalks along the frontage of the development of 200 South Itham, west side of Itham Avenue.
You're, Steve, you're talking about the sidewalk center mandated by the board of commissioners?
Correct. So Roger is correct. It's actually two waivers. So we, the, the planning commission already gave an opinion on the one waiver, as Mary had said, interior to the development. This would be for the sidewalk along the frontage of 200 South Itham. So whenever you're, this commission is ready to make a recommendation on the project as a whole, I would just, project as a whole, I would ask that we just pull that one item out. So in the end, you're going to have a recommendation of denial, approval, approval with conditions for the, for the land development plan preliminary. You have one for the sidewalks interior, and you would have another recommendation for the sidewalks on the frontage.
So that would be a separate motion, Steve?
Yes, sir.
For the ones that are on, on the frontage that they want to get away with, are they going to put in some sort of crosswalk like they have just up from there at, at the school, college, because you won't see people coming out and maybe one of those signs you can actually see. Otherwise, you're going to have 18 adults and 20, 30 young people coming out from, you know, behind the bushes.
So actually, Liz, I think the sidewalks are going to be on Agnes Irwin's side.
Right. A crosswalk to get to it.
Oh, I see.
Where they have a crosswalk, something to identify that they're coming out of there, that that volume of people is coming out of there.
We sort of know where to go really, right? Except being in the street.
Yep. I, I.
You're going to come out of a, a street that's not 90 degrees. You're not going to see the cars coming and you're going to be coming down to the pitch on a bicycle when you're 10 years old. How, is there anything that's going to alert a driver coming that there's an opening there?
Yeah, that's a good point, Liz.
Yeah, I don't think we have an issue with it. I guess it would be a township decision whether to install it or not.
I think, I think the suggestion was that you guys would install it.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's an issue.
Steve, while, while we're on this, what I would ask is, and this, I think it's part and parcel a little bit, would be the time to really dive into the, the applicants proposing an 80 degree angle to the intersection. Our traffic engineer, Damon Drummond, provided some detailed comments on the 90 degree approach to South Itham. If, if it's okay with everybody, since we're talking about a crosswalk at that intersection, I think this would be the appropriate time to hear what Damon has to say and then what the applicant, what their thought is.
I think that's, that's excellent, Steve. I, I agree.
For safety purposes, it's always better to have an 90 degree angle at an intersection versus anything less than that. So my, my request or my suggestion was for the applicant to design this as close to 90 degrees as possible. It looks like we do have some extra space, particularly since the planning commission has now said they probably do not need sidewalk there. So it looks like they can get closer to 90 degrees there. The other issue is when I looked at this driveway coming down, it looks like the headlights would be shining into the house that's across the street. So that's another issue. So if you bring the, if you bring the cul-de-sac a little bit towards Lancaster Avenue, go in that direction, it would align better with the house across the street. So those are my concerns with 80 degree intersection there. I'll let the applicant.
Sure. Thanks, Damon.
Respond.
Yeah. The, the issue, the section that Damon is is citing is it states streets shall be laid out to intersect as nearly as possible at right angles. No street shall intersect another an angle less than 70 degrees. Actually, I believe we started this project with 70 degrees. We moved it to 80 degrees. Our understanding is the safety factor is really minimal. And in fact, one of the streets right there is already at 81 degrees. And if, Ian, can you turn over to Tim? Is Tim on? Or, or Dave?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, Tim. Tim has a drawing that kind of depicts that. I'd ask him to explain that. If, Ian, you can turn it over to Tim so he can pull that drawing up.
Yeah, whenever you're ready to screen share. Great. All right. So the section we're looking at is these two right here. So this is the existing neighboring street. This is the proposed street at 200 South Itham. The existing street at Vermont Lane intersects South Itham Avenue at 81 degrees. This was surveyed both by the right of way and by curb line to be intersecting the centerline of South Itham at 81 degrees. And so the proposed road at 200 South Itham intersects at approximately the same angle, right about 80 degrees here. And the one thing that, that allowed the site to do is what's not shown here is the proposed grading that goes into it. It follows some of the contours in here, which is part of that. And then gives us a little more room to grade along here. And it added to the feel of the, or kept with the feel of the existing trianon subdivision as both streets coming out of the subdivision all intersect between 70 and 80 degrees. And so we went with the most perpendicular of the streets of the two streets to the neighbor and one with 80 degrees.
Mr. Davis, I have a couple of questions for you. So, and, and not any order, but I don't think anybody's going to notice that you follow the same angle that was done in trianon, you know, for consistency. Also, I, I don't think what was done in the mid or early eighties, wrong or right, should be a reason to do this now. So as, as our traffic engineer noted, you don't have, if, if the sidewalk waiver is granted, you would be able to approach 90 degrees more easily. And is there, I know you had brought up and the, the Mr. Conwell brought up that you don't want to go on to the open space adjacent, the adjacent parcel of open space. I understand that fully. But what would stop the developer from using retaining walls to be able to do that? And as Damon said, take that entrance further from the resident who's across the street, whether there's trees there screening or not. And whether, and I think at one point Dave Fiorello said the angle of the road may preclude that, but either way, we have a, a safety concern from our traffic engineer. We take away the direct look into the house of our existing resident. So is there any reason why we couldn't construct that closer to 90? If not 90, 89, I don't know.
Well, the one thing, Steve, that you had mentioned, that if we shift the alignment to provide a 90 degree angle, we're shifting the centerline intersection with South Itham Avenue towards, I guess, the north, towards Lancaster Avenue. It puts the right of way line of the roadway right up against our property line. So in order to grade the full width of the right of way, we can't do that without grading onto the adjacent property to, you know, make that transition. You mentioned a retaining wall. That retaining wall would have to be within the right of way in order to be able to do that. The thing is, there really isn't that much difference, you know, any sight lines that you have. The headlight sight lines are on a downward angle as you're approaching the intersection from the, from the subdivision. Because we do have that five degree approach so that any headlight approach coming down that roadway is shining into the roadway in, into South Itham Avenue. It's not shining onto the adjacent properties. The sight distance that we achieve with a 90 degree angle, the difference between that and an 80 degree angle is, is very minimal. It's almost negligible. So we're not really gaining that much in terms of sight distance or anything like that as we, if we were to change it to 90 degrees.
So let me ask you if Tim Davis could pull up something a little larger and that we could also, and I don't mean to get too far in the weeds, but obviously our ordinance calls it out and there's a reason for that. It's safety and obviously our township's appointed traffic engineer has called it out and it's a, it's a considerable comment from him. So I guess I'm asking, and I'm not trying to be flip, but is it that the developer doesn't want to do it or can't do it? And I, I understand what you're saying, Dave, but I'm not getting absolutes. I'm getting, we may, it's tough in the right of way. We're getting closer. But I guess I'm going to ask for the planning commission, is it possible to slide that over, stay within your right of ways with the use of a retaining wall or whatever, whatever other method you could come up with?
Is it possible? Yes, it is. I, I don't think we're gaining anything in terms of safety by changing it to a 90 degree angle.
But do you notice though, Mr. Fiorello, that the topography drops off as you cross the street, which means that what you think is someone's driveway is really their top of the first floor? Yes. The top drops off. And also the further you get away, because these houses on Itham Avenue, their frontages are pushed back further. So by the time you take 80, 10 degrees and go 70 feet back, you are pointing into 249 South Itham Avenue.
You know, you, the headlights, yes, I agree, are, are aiming in that direction. However, again, because of that vertical angle, those headlights are aiming towards or to the middle of the roadway and not to the, onto the adjacent properties, where the property is across the street.
Okay, from what? Vertical angle coming down most of the way. You do have a vertical, you also have a vertical angle coming up when you hit the cross section of the street. So your lights will be shining at somebody's house as you're crossing the street.
I also, I also.
Making the right turn.
I also did, that's right, Damon. And I also don't like the idea of making an 80 degree turning angle. I just don't like it. I mean, the, you know, streets are planted in a certain way for a certain reason. And it's, it's a legitimate, this is a, a real legitimate criticism, I believe. And I don't think, I don't think this, this site, I don't think we're asking for the moon here in terms of changes to make this 90 degrees. I, I personally, I look at that driveway now and I don't, I can't, I cannot understand the resistance to making it 90. I don't know if anyone else in the commission agrees with you, but it just seems like this is, this should be something that you, you guys just comply with.
Yeah, I'm still unclear, at least from this exactly where the, the house across the street is and how far the, the drive would have to slide to not be like essentially pointing at it.
There is an exhibit that shows that. Does, does anybody know where it is?
I will hazard a guess, Mr. Davis has it at his finger, at his fingertips.
Yeah, you know, the, the one thing, I guess, can we do 90 degrees? We can do 90 degrees. We've looked at it. We can do it. There was a concern about aesthetics. We were trying to keep the country rural type feel as opposed to an urban type feel. That was one of the reasons why we kind of came in at an angle because we feel that feels more like a rural type feel as opposed to, you know, kind of an urban feel. That was one of the reasons really why we wanted to do it. But can we do 90? We can do 90, you know?
Because Nick, when, when Shade Tree was out there and when we, and we really like your, your, the site plan for tree replacement and what trees you're putting in everything, you're going to have a, you're not going to have an urban feel to this. I guarantee you. And, and moving that 10 degrees isn't going to change that. And you, you have, you have a great landscape plan and this, this is just the tweak that makes it legal.
Okay. I mean, Joe, I mean, developer's on, are you okay?
Hi, hi. I don't know if you can hear me. I, I, I can't, I can hear 50% of what's going on. I, I've tried to reconnect up. So can you hear me?
Yes, Joe, I guess. Okay.
Your team just agreed to put sidewalks on both sides.
Listen, we can, I, I just, let me just make a, a couple of comments. I've tried, you know, I've gotten bits and pieces of what's been said. Yes, it's possible to make this road was, and we're not here to, to vehemently argue the point. So we can make them 90 degrees. Our point is that we feel, and I, with all due respect to, you know, others who disagree, that there is no, there is not a significant, you know, whatever benefit there may be to increase visibility of a 90 degree road, it is insignificant. And that's, that, that's our feeling. And so that's why we have it at 80. And we, we'll, we also think it, it's, it's better for the community in terms of it just, it, it just has aesthetic things like that have an impact. And I understand, Matt, your point. And as I said, I, I, we, we can do it at 90. But can, can we have a recommendation subject to doing it at 90?
Yeah, I think that's what we'd do is that the condition, when the condition would be that the road would be angled at 90 degrees.
Right. Just like they're, they're looking at your other waiver request, Joe, this would be another one. They would opine on this.
Steve.
I'm sorry. Yes, I agree. Bad wording. The other waivers, but this would be an item they could opine on. So X. So X with the condition of ABC.
Yeah, I agree. Mary, I think, Mary, you're in agreement with that, aren't you? This would be a condition of the approval, that it be a 90-degree.
It would be a recommended condition, yeah, it's not a waiver. Mr. Davis, you never found that exhibit, so that Mr. Brubaker can see what we're talking about across the street?
Is he not there?
He's there.
I'm not sure what you're asking for, Mary?
Um, I think, uh, Steve rubs off on me, can you blow that up a whole lot? So.
Yeah, I thought, I thought Tim showed something with the cars approaching versus the house. We saw that at a meeting or two ago.
I believe that was in the sidewalk meeting, Steve, that we have that.
But, but Tim, do you have that?
Yes, give me one moment, I'll bring it up.
Yeah, I, because I thought there was two things on, on the table, one, the 90 degrees and, and a, you know, somebody raised a concern about how that had points at the house, and I was trying to understand that. And just see, because when I look at the plans, I don't see a reason it shouldn't be 90 degrees. You know, that's what the, what the ordinance is, but if there's an issue about sliding it to not hit the house, if that was part of that, that's what I was trying to understand, because that was what was raised.
And Chris, I think when I saw the exhibit, and I could be remembering this wrong, I thought it was in, like a black and white aerial photo with the roads overlaid on it.
Yes, that's true.
You could actually see the house.
That's correct. I just don't, I, Tim, can you provide that? Do you have it?
I do not have it queued up on the Zoom file. I will have to see.
No, no, that's, this was the, this was a separate, it was a single, a single PDF that was designed to show.
I think what Tim is saying, Joe, that he doesn't have it in front of him right now, he has to go back into his file and find it.
Mary, I think that you're requesting a plan that showed the relationship of the proposed road to the house directly across the street. Is, is that, is that accurate?
I can answer for her, Joe, yes, we did see that at one point.
All right, but Mary, is that what you refer to? I'm sorry, Mike, I'm getting 50% of the vibe.
That was my fault, unmuted most of the time because the chakatas are so loud that I'm afraid that you wouldn't be able to hear each other. Yes, it was, it was an aerial photo that was kind of black and white, and it showed that might be it.
Yeah, well, do.
And maybe Steve or, or Damon can narrate.
I think what Tim is doing now is highlighting the, the house on the, on the photograph.
That's the approximate outline, yes, Steve, because this is the approximate outline of that, of that house there.
So 90 degrees is much better for that resident?
I think, yeah, I think our concern is illustrated on that particular exhibit, pointing to my computer, but if you draw the lines, the center line of the road straight down, it, it points straight to the house, thanks. And then if we move that over a degree or two.
Pointing to the side of the house.
Or perhaps 10 degrees.
Or, yeah, 10 is good, too.
Yeah, no, that's helpful, thank you.
So for the planning commission's benefit, that's why staff keeps harping on this issue, to the extent that we can make anybody in a existing home life a little bit easier, that's always the goal. Any, they agreed to the condition.
Yeah. So, so that issue is settled.
Right.
And the, Nick, the general comments about the turning templates and the further sidewalk details, that, the further sidewalk details are hung up on whether sidewalks going in the first place, right?
Correct.
Or Stephen, Mary, am I speaking out of turn here or something, or?
The sidewalk details, we're asking for a little bit more information, just to verify that, where the sidewalk's going to go, how it's going to be designed, to make sure we don't need any additional easements or impact to the property owners.
So actually, Damon, you need that information?
We're, we're looking for information to verify there's no additional impact.
Right, and, and it's no good not having that information, having these meetings with the residents, right?
That's really a final plan item. We provided all this detail on, on the sidewalks and, you know, and, and due respect, and all respect to Damon, we got this comment like a couple of days ago. And we've had all these meetings regarding the sidewalks with staff and where they're going to be located.
So.
Our last meeting, we did discuss the sidewalks, and I do recall us asking for, we were, we did need to see additional information at our last staff meeting, is what we.
But Damon, I wasn't hearing you suggest that preliminary approval be held up for this. I was thinking that.
I, I'm not suggesting that.
That should be a condition of preliminary approval.
That could be a condition, I, I agree with that.
And we have no problem with that.
And rest of the planning commission, how do you feel about that?
No, I'm fine.
Yeah, I, I agree, Steve, I, I am too.
I am also.
I am as well. I do have one other concern about the development that I'd like to bring up. I don't know if it's been discussed in other meetings. It's another safety issue that really people who live around here would, would be able to identify with, but the original estate is surrounded in dilapidated barbed wire. Some of that fencing is falling down. In fact, the entire tree non-development is surrounded by it. And so I wonder, I, I just was curious, is the developer planning on removing all of that dilapidated and falling down barbed wire fence with this project?
Hi. Hi, hi, this is Joe Conwell, the developer, Megan, I, I'm hearing only like half, so that, are you talking about the dilapidated buildings?
No.
No, it's fencing, barbed wire fencing.
Well, y, y, yes, we are, but at, at this point, it, it does provide some, we're trying to keep the site safe, and we're trying to keep kids, you know, out of it, and with some success, that fencing is old. But I, I, I think it's safer with it than without it.
But it's going to be removed.
So, I mean, we, we could, I, I don't, you know, like.
Joe, Joe, your intent is to remove that fencing as part of your development, correct?
And what was that, Dave?
Your intent is to have that fence removed as part of the construction process?
Yes.
Oh, that's great news.
So.
Construction aside.
Unfortunately, I just am getting. Yeah, I, I, I can't, I can't hear it. I, I.
Now, can you watch?
You're okay.
Now, can you watch this on YouTube? Do you have the ability to watch it live on YouTube?
There's a delay, and it's not, it's just.
Okay.
I, I, I have it on YouTube right here, but it's not, there's a delay, there's a delay, so it's just very confusing.
Um, Nick, I'm sensing that there could be a disconnect here. Is it possible that Joe's talking about removing the fence around the dilapidated mansion? And Megan's talking about removing fencing along the perimeter of the trianon development?
No, I think, Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, on the perimeter of the, of this piece, there's barbed wire fencing, and I believe what she's asking, will that be removed? And we're saying, yes, you know, it will be removed. I believe that was Megan's question. I believe.
So that is my question. I hope that Trianon will see this move and say, hmm, maybe, maybe we should explore removing all of it, especially with moving nine homes and potentially more kids in the neighborhood. I think it's a great move to start with this parcel, once construction is done and remove that fence. And potentially think about around the open space, too. It's, it's pretty dangerous. And so that, that would be my only comment, but it's great news that some of it's coming out.
Yep, we certainly can remove the fencing around our project. Of course, we have no control over the trianon fencing.
I, well, there's fencing around open space, Steve?
Yeah, Mary, I have to take a look at that. I could say this is an 80s development, and I, I've been on the site, but I really didn't pay attention to the, or notice fencing on the open space unless it's what's adjacent to coming down the side of the drive, but I will take a look at that.
That's something that, based on Megan's inquiry, you can provide information to the board of commissioners at its meeting, because and I, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, that's what we do. We can't argue that we have no access to be able to do anything on the existing open space and then argue that we're using that same open space to meet our open space requirements. So I think that.
Hi.
Steve can take a look and, and make a recommendation.
Absolutely.
Uh, but Mary, is that, is that an issue that would stop us from approving preliminary?
Um, I don't want to speak for the planning commission, but I wasn't envisioning that it would be, I was envisioning a condition.
Yeah, when we did our Shade Tree site visit with the arborist and with the developer, I didn't see any, any, any fencing like of that sort inside the new proposed development. We walked all around it, so that's not my recollection that that was, you know, something, an in-your-face issue inside the development. I understand what Megan's saying.
I wouldn't think it would hold up the decision either. I think it was just a, a comment that, that I'm happy to hear that it's going to be removed.
No, it's a good comment. So where do we stand here, folks? Steve and staff, have we heard everything we need to hear at this point?
I believe so, sir. The, the planning commission will have to make a recommendation. We have a couple of conditions to vote on, as well as, as Roger had pointed out, the second sidewalk waiver, if you will. So you already voted on the sidewalks interior, this would be on the sidewalks along the frontage of the development.
So should we?
I, I would ask the developer first if there's any items that are not, will comply in Roger Damon's letter.
No.
We also have to have public comment.
Comment, yeah.
Ian, do we have anyone on the line?
Matt, we do not have anyone on the line for public.
You don't need to answer that up. There are no items that are not comply or won't, won't comply. Yeah, Nick, Nick told us that, Joe. Oh, sorry, I just, I'm, I'm like. You're, you're stuck in the 70s, Joe. Yeah, I'm struggling.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just pulled up on Google Earth, and I see what I can speak of, there's like the vestiges of barbed wire fence. I can't tell if it's on the 200 South Eithen property, which we know will be addressed, but to the solicitor's point, if it's on the open space, we'll address, you know, the open space of trianon, we'll address that also.
So do we have to put something in, in order for that to happen, Steve, or is that just understood?
No, I would, I would think you would want to make, in, like, impose a condition or recommend the imposition of a condition, and that can be fleshed out more fully between tonight and when it gets before the board of commissioners, but a, a condition's the best way to go.
What, what, see, I'm not familiar with this. There's barbed wire around the trianon development?
No, Nick, there's, if you look on Street View.
I'm, I'm sharing my screen now, Nick.
South Eithen, yeah, there you go, that's exactly what I'm looking at.
This is, this is from South Eithen. There's the existing entrance to the 200 property right there that goes up to the old mansion site. So it's right there, it's in the adjacent open space by where your entrance road's going to be.
I don't.
I don't remember saying that. It, it's on the Street View, I, I had the same thing of Roger did, so I think that might be something we have to address with the trianon HOA. I can talk to Mary offline about that.
That, that image was taken in July of 2019.
Um, and, and Steve, while I think the developer would feel more comfortable having approval from the HOA to remove that barbed wire, I still think a condition at this meeting is the appropriate way of handling it.
And I would agree, because that open space is being used by this developer, so.
Correct.
I guess that makes sense.
I will add one more comment. There is barbed wire around parts of the entire trianon development. It was never removed over time. I've seen it on multiple properties. And I, I don't know what the path is forward for that. I think, I think it's dangerous, given the kids living in the area, but removing it around this, I think is a, is a really good first step, and hopefully, hopefully even some of the owners may start to identify the other pockets of it around the development.
Is it in the, Megan, do you know, is it in the development or is it on other people's property, I guess?
It's hard to tell.
We have no. Somebody else's property, that's.
Well, I think originally there was this type of fencing surrounding the entire plot of land before trianon was developed. And so there's remnants of it on the backside of the homes on Wooded Lane that abut trianon development. I know it exists there, and I've seen it on Eithen Avenue. So it is, I, I don't know how much of it has been removed and how much of it still remains. But I think it definitely exists around this portion in places, and so I think that, that making sure that it's removed once construction is done is good.
Right now, in my notes, I'm saying remove bar, barbed wire fencing surrounding the development and possibly remove fence around the open space, and that's the condition that, like, I'm making a note of here.
That sounds great.
Well, yeah. Hey, Mary and Nick, I, I, I'm ha, happy to work to, you know, improve the fence situation, but I, I, remember that, if we're going to remove fence, we, we can only remove fence that's on our property. And I think that those, there, I think there may be some, some open space over there that does back up to Wooded Lane, but if it's along property lines, it's not going to be on our property, because the property lines on that part of the trianon development, you know, they go right up to, they, they abut the property line of, of the Wooded Lane homeowners.
You have a really good attorney.
If it's on our property, we will either remove it or make it safe.
Nick, Nick has been hearing the whole conversation, has been responding appropriately on your behalf.
Okay.
So I, 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 I think we all understand that it's going to take.
I'll, I'll, I'll let Nick do it. I, I, I wasn't aware, as far as I know, Nick was like reading the paper or something. I, I can't hear what he's saying.
Nick, you need to get your client a new laptop for Christmas.
So folks, um.
what do we do now? Do we put together a motion? Or does someone offer a motion with all the intricacies of the sidewalks, the wave, the waivers, the fencing? How do we? How do we wrap this thing together, Steve? Like, is the sidewalk, is the sidewalk on Eithin just a separate vote?
Yeah, I think. So I think Mary brought it up. I mean, if it's the sidewalk on Eithin, specifically that open space, and correct me if I'm wrong, Solicitor, this proposed subdivision uses Treenon open space, right? So they should have the ability to remove that. So my suggestion is, there's a recommendation of approval or denial of the application for preliminary land development. If it's approval, we already have your vote on the waiver on sidewalk. There should be a vote on the waiver on the frontage sidewalk. And then we have the conditions. The 90-degree angle of approach is a condition. What the solicitor noted for the fencing along the open space would be a condition.
Right. And if it helps at all, you could make a motion to grant conditional preliminary plan approval, subject to the recommendations set forth in the June 1 Gannett Fleming and the May 28 Gilmore and Associates review letters, and further conditioned upon redrawing the entrance road so that it makes a 90-degree intersection with South Eithin Avenue. And your motion would include a recommendation that the waivers requested by the applicant be granted, subject to a condition on the sidewalk on Eithin Avenue waiver, expressly and specifically conditioned upon compliance with the conditions regarding sidewalks set forth in the conditional use adjudication issued by the Board of Commissioners, and further condition on the installation of a crosswalk at the at the entrance to this development.
So moved. Second.
Perfect. Thank you, Chris.
Mary, would you mind sending that?
Exactly, Chris.
Thank you.
Yeah, because this applicant, if he gets a decision tonight, it's going to be on the Commissioners' meeting in exactly one week. And I will need Mary's that motion.
I'll get that motion to Trish tonight.
We also need a vote on this, right?
Sure.
All in favor of approval? Hi.
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 Okay.
Was that unanimous, Mr. Chair? I'm just just for the notes.
I believe so.
Yes, it was.
Back to you, Nick. Are you saying something, Nick?
No, I'm just saying thank you.
Oh, no, no, no. Thank you, guys. And good luck with the board.
Thank you. Thank you from our side also.
Okay, folks, so next up is 250 King of Pressure Road Preliminary slash Final Land Development Plan. This is the construction of a parking structure over an existing surface parking lot. This this development got received was this development's waiver requests were approved by the zoning hearing board last week.
That's variances, not waivers.
I'm sorry, Roger. Thanks. But what's before us tonight is, or not those, there's no zoning issues before us tonight. So what's before us tonight is, you know, land development plan. Trying to find it here. So who's here for 250?
Yes, good evening. This is Bob Tucker on behalf of BDN 250, King of Pressure.
Hi, Bob.
As, as you said, Matt, last last month, we made a presentation before the Planning Commission concerning the several variances we were seeking before the zoning hearing board. The Planning Commission voted to recommend that the zoning hearing board grant those variances. And as you mentioned, last Thursday, the zoning board did, in fact, grant the variances. We're here tonight in terms of the land development application filed with me. We have Joseph Trainer on behalf of BDN 250. We have Greg Richardson, our traffic engineer, and Alex Tweedy from Land Corps Engineering. Tonight, we're seeking recommendation for approval based upon the review and changes that Alex Tweedy is going to walk through with regard to the two review letters that we received. And the two review letters, one from Gannett Fleming dated June 1, and the other Gilmore and Associates dated May 28. I believe Joe wants to make a few comments before we turn it over to Alex. Joe, if you're there.
Okay, yeah. Joe, can I just jump in a second?
Yeah.
So you guys are seeking preliminary final tonight?
We're seeking that recommendation, yes.
Because I just want to note that, you know, you have to go before Shade Tree. And I personally, I just, I hate giving a final approval before the requisite boards have heard, you know, what you're up to. So that's just my feeling. It's, I'm not, I'm not speaking for the rest of the Planning Commission or the staff. But I would feel more comfortable giving a final approval if we're going to approve this after you go through Shade Tree Commission and hear what they have to say. Does that, does that sound okay to everyone? The reason I, the reason I'm there is because in the old days, Shade Tree always got these plans before planning. So planning was then like smart about like a certain aspect of the plan that otherwise we don't even know what the Shade Tree is going to say. We don't, we can't. So it's sort of awkward. And I just, I feel more comfortable with with Shade Tree weighing in when it matters, as if it matters.
If I may, Matt, if I could, may I respond?
Sure, sure.
Sure. So our intent was with with all this. So we've gone through the the zoning part of the application associated with this project. We're now in front of you for land development. We do have to go to Shade Tree and Design Review Board. And Alex can jump in if there's if there's any other reviews that I'm missing. So we fully expected that if you did grant the recommendation for preliminary final, that it would be subject to review of Shade Tree and Design Review Board and so forth. But obviously, we'll, you know, defer to the board's collective decision on on what you think is best. But we did expect that if you did grant or recommend approval, that it would be subject to Shade Tree's review and approval.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Joe. Sorry to interrupt you guys.
Oh, no problem. So Bob, thanks for that quick introduction. As he mentioned, we're here for the parking garage structure over an existing surface parking lot at 250 King of Pressure Road. Just to re-familiarize everyone with the project, this is the former Penn Medicine facility that we Brandywine acquired at the end of 2020, when they relocated to their new facility down the road. As, as Matt and Bob mentioned, we've, we've gone through the, we saw you last month, we actually saw you the month, month before that with a prior plan. But the plan we had in front of you last month was for zoning approval. And this is just a further further approvals on that plan for land development. So Alex Tweedy, we have Alex Tweedy from Land Corps, civil engineer, and Greg Richardson, our traffic engineer, to address their review letter comments. We received the review letters, I believe it was last Wednesday. So we've gone through and reviewed, and Alex will walk you through the the comments, the waivers were requesting, the items we we plan to address, and everything else that would be, will comply. So with that, and I appreciate your time, I'll turn it over to Alex.
Hi, Alex.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Let me share a screen. And just to re-familiarize everyone with the project, Joe mentioned it's the existing Penn Medicine Building. This is the rendering from the zoning hearing board last Thursday. As we discussed previously, I believe we were before the Planning Commission once or twice in advance of our zoning hearing board variance request, we are proposing the parking structure in the dark tan located in the southeast corner of the property over top of the existing main parking field that is out at the facility today. In addition to the parking structure, there is a small walkway from the elevator tower to the main entrance of the building here. And along this existing main driveway, we are adding currently, or on the original application, it's 13 parking stalls to mirror the existing ones on this side. That's basically the bulk of the improvements, other than a small generator addition off the loading dock in this back corner. The remainder of the site is staying in its existing condition. This is the land development plan that was presented. The only change in between the zoning and the land development plan, and we'll discuss it somewhat in Damon's letter. Originally, we had exit movements out of the garage at these two driveways. In the previous review, he recommended those be closed off. So now we only have a two-way access on the center parking bay and the main access here. The remainder of the the design is consistent with the zoning board application that was submitted. What I'll do is I'll run through, I'll start with Gannett's letter from June 1. The majority of this letter relates to the waiver requests that we are recommending. The majority of the rest of the letters will comply, but I'll run through the details. In the opening, he states the three variances that were received from the zoning hearing board last Thursday, which are some side yard and rear yard setbacks for the placement of the garage in the back corner, the building and structure area increasing on the site because of the garage counting as a structure and being included in those calculations, and then a reduction in the landscape area. If you recall, there's about a 7,000, I think it's 7,400 square foot increase in the landscape area. So all those, all that relief was received last week. The second paragraph relates to the waivers that are being requested. Number one relates to the prelim and final land development. That was already discussed in your opening. So we are, we're requesting that waiver, but we will obviously discuss that as you guys discuss your motion for approval tonight, if if we get there. Number two is the standard waiver for the existing improvements within 500 feet of the project site. We're requesting that waiver basically because this is an existing developed property, and we're just putting a parking structure on top of the existing parking field. So the regional survey, we don't believe, is is necessary here. If we're required, similar to the previous project, we could provide an aerial overlay that shows that 500-foot perimeter. The third waiver noted relates to parking stall size. On this waiver, we are agreeing to remove this waiver request. There's a little bit of nuance to this. Within the parking garage, the code actually allows a reduction in parking stall size from your township standard of nine and a half by 20 to nine by 19 within the parking garage. We needed a waiver request because we held that nine by 19 parking stall size for these additional surface parking stalls outside of the garage. But in discussion, and I have a red line plan here, we are agreeing to expand these to nine and a half by 20, the code requirement, excuse me, and that'll reduce the parking count by one to get the wider parking stalls. And then actually, comment number four is related to the 10 continuous parking spaces. We will also add in the island for that. So we will reduce this from 13 total stalls to 11, allowing us to get rid of the waiver request for the parking stall size and help make number four a partial waiver. We feel we still need number four for the 10 continuous parking spaces without a curb landscape island, because we have more than 10 internal to the parking garage. But the waiver request for that is obviously, we cannot install a curb landscape island within a parking garage. So that is the basis for that request. But we are willing to add that for the proposed surface parking that we are adding.
So, so Alex, so landscape wise, what would be your plan that?
Landscape wise, related to?
That area? Would that be just devoid of landscaping?
The parking garage?
No, 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 the, the outside spaces.
No, we're agreeing to put the landscape island in, as shown on the screen here. So we would, we would place the required parking lot trees for the, what was 13 stalls, but is now 11. So we will, we will comply with the parking lot requirements for the surface parking. We just can't plant trees inside a parking structure.
No, no, I understand. And I think there's some really good thinking about appropriate plants that you'll hear from the Shade Tree Commission when you get to that point.
Correct. And then number five is actually the same comment or the same discussion. Number five is the parking lot landscape requirements. As noted, we will comply with, you know, the requirements needed for the the proposed surface parking stalls. But once again, we're seeking the waiver for the parking lot landscape requirement internal to the garage because of the nature of it being a parking structure. Number six relates to street tree planting requirements. Originally, I think our opinion was that that we would keep the existing streetscape as is, since the building is tucked back in the corner and already shielded by the existing trees. So we request this waiver. We reviewed with our landscape designer. We believe we can supplement with some additional landscape trees. But due to this existing landscaping in this northeast corner, this existing parking field, and the existing parking and shrub row on this side, we're limited to areas to which we can propose additional street trees. So what we're willing to do is make that a partial waiver, where we will add street trees where feasible. But we do not, we will not be able to get to the code requirement of, you know, one per 30-foot of frontage on each road. We think we'll be able to place about three trees on the existing slope coming down from the parking lot in this general area, and probably only one or two trees on each side of this entry sidewalk here. The remainder of the southern portion of Radnor Chester Road is already planted with a heavy landscape shrub screen in front of this parking bay. And as you can see, there are already some existing street trees along this green space along the road.
Yeah, Alex, I would just say that it would, there's some really novel ways to get some like cool things in there, like crepe myrtles, which are not big trees, but they're beautiful trees and they do screen. And so just, I would just hope that you would be open to some, some, some ideas that are sort of groundbreaking now about parking, parking areas and how to plant them. I mean, you could put some grasses in, and that'd be fine, too. So I think we could probably, Shade Tree will, I'd be happy to work with you on that.
Correct. Yeah, I think, yeah, we're open to doing what we can. I think we still need the waiver, though, because I assume the code probably only counts, you know, certain trees as street trees. So we would need a waiver to be able to be more, more creative and and plant what is appropriate for the the situation.
Would it work if we said to waive street tree planning requirements, subject to the recommendations of the Shade Tree Commission?
From, from our perspective, that that works. We're, we definitely were planning to. were planning to and want to work with the Shade Tree Commission on identifying the best way to address trees really throughout the, the, the site and really along this, these street trees.
That, that may change all of this. If anybody's driven along this stretch of road recently, you can see a major construction project for a trail going in. And it doesn't look like these drawings have the trail on them. They don't have the planting that is going in on the trail, which is significant on the edge of your property. And I'm not even sure of the extent of the plantings along Radnor Chester Road. And I mostly travel King of Prussia Road. But before you go before that information needs to be on the plan. It's a multi-use trail with a lot of planting.
I was, I was provided the plans that showed the sidewalk itself, but I did not receive any of the associate landscape plans. So thank you for bringing, bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, Steve, that's a big deal.
Yeah, I can, I, I will provide then to Alex. So pretty much on the Brandywine Realty side, there are mostly shrubs being planted, but there are a few trees and everything is adjacent to the trail itself. Some is on the bank, but we'll definitely provide that to Alex.
Yeah, because I mean, I think that's what Megan's saying. There's, there's going to be some buffering, significant buffering all that's going in already. And so
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, that the, the trail really isn't providing buffering at this property. It's more so down by the school district, but we'll provide Alex with the landscape plans and he can superimpose anything he needs.
Great. Thank you.
I think, I think ideally I come, coming from the perspective of these new plantings on your property that some have gone in and already don't look so hot. That there, that there would be some coordination between the plantings and coordination between where these new beds are and where things have been established in the appropriate trees. You might, you might find there are significant synergies between that that haven't been explored yet. So.
Thank you. We can, we can review what's provided. Right. So I guess, yeah, we would be open to the street trees in coordination with the Shade Tree Commission. And I guess the, the proposed plantings for the Radnor Trail, which would be part of the Shade Tree discussion. And then waiver number seven. We, we listed as a waiver, but it might be more of a confirmation of the code. We listed as a waiver for the park and rec land fee requirements. But actually, we, we listed that way. We don't believe that park and rec is triggered for this because park and rec is only related to proposed building square footage, and this is just a parking structure. So we don't believe that the code section actually applies, but we just listed it as a waiver to open the discussion and I guess get confirmation that that, that standard is not applicable since there's no building square footage proposed as part of this application.
Anybody want to weigh in on that? Cause I, I'm not sure I I'm not sure I know what to say.
I'm, I'm not necessarily sure what the issue is, but I think this is about a fee and I think those are normally, we usually punt on those to the you know, decision, ultimate decision of the Board of Commissioners. Steve, are you there?
Sorry about that. Yes, I agree. So that will be up to the Board of Commissioners. So from a staff standpoint, we feel the fee is valid. But the applicant is welcome to bring that to the Board of Commissioners. I don't know that that's needed to be opined on by this commission.
I will note, Steve, based on your comment, if, and, and Alex was, just wanted to confirm if the fee was valid just based on what he mentioned. But if it is determined by, by you and township staff that is, it is indeed a waiver request required, then we'll drop this waiver request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I wasn't sure. Is he dropping the waiver request now or dropping the waiver request later after you review it?
Now, we're, we're discussing with the board. We don't feel it's appropriate, but if they find it is appropriate, we will pay the fee, I believe is what Joe was saying.
Yes.
Okay.
And then starting on page two, there is a, it's not a Sado waiver, but a stormwater code waiver relative to the soils on the property. We tested multiple locations. There's not adequate soil for infiltration. I'll get into the details of the stormwater design as we go through the letter, but we are requesting a waiver from the groundwater recharge portion of the stormwater code. But complying with the other water quality and peak rate control standards and proposing an alternative design that we feel meets the intent of the groundwater recharge code, but still need the relief because it's, it's not direct infiltration due to poor soils as your code requires. So that is a summary of all the waiver requests and then I can get into the body of the letter. There is a section related to zoning. The first three are all classified as narrative comments relative to existing non-conformities or just information for the board and commission. Four, five and six are recitations of the variances that we just discussed and received last Thursday. So there's no additional discussion needed on those. Number seven is some clarifications. Originally, we had proposed a two-story garage with an optional third story in discussion with staff and review letters. We have agreed that we are no longer, we're going to remove any reference to the third story and based on the zoning board approval, we are proposing only a two-story garage and we'll remove any reference to the third story. So that should address that comment. Number eight is once again, an existing non-conformity. So more of a narrative comment. Number nine relates to just some additional notes requested on the plan about the screening and cutoffs for the lights on the lighting plan. So we will, we will comply with that comment and provide the additional information related to lighting screening. And number 10 relates to steep slopes on the property. We have reviewed the existing topography. We don't believe there's any area of the site that is classified as steep slopes. So we'll respond accordingly and provide whatever information necessary to, to Roger and his team at Gannett. Related to subdivision and land development, number one is the prelim final waiver. Number two is the five hundred foot survey waiver. Number three, we believe is a carryover comment. On the first submission, we had requested a waiver from the landscape plan, but in our revised submission that we're reviewing tonight, we did provide a landscape plan. So we don't believe that comment should still be in the letter. Number four relates to the waiver for parking stall size. So we already discussed that. Five and six are the landscape island and the landscape parking lot landscaping. So that we already discussed as far as the waiver requests. Number seven relates to the street tree landscaping. We already discussed that. And number eight is the fee and lieu for the park and rec. So that is being deferred to the Board of Commissioners. Stormwater, number one is a well comply, will provide a project schedule. Number two and three relate to the stormwater waiver. Well, I guess three is the stormwater design, two is the stormwater waiver. So as noted before, part of what we did, if you remember the history of this project originally, we had kept the parking in this area in the existing condition as part of our revised submission. We created a larger green space here. And part of that was one, to reduce the land, minimum landscape area variance request, but also it gave us the opportunity to propose a rain garden as opposed to an underground stormwater parking or an underground stormwater management facility underneath the existing parking lot. And what this allows us to do, we tested pretty much this entire area through the garage and the proposed stormwater facility. And all soils were, were consistent with zero inch per hour infiltration rate and the site doesn't infiltrate today and is not feasible from a soil perspective to infiltrate as part of this project. What we are doing is proposing a rain garden in this location. That allows a couple of things to occur. One, we are proposing to plant this rain garden with a variety of trees and shrubs and trap water within the rain garden and what's referred to by Dr. Traver Felnova and other people doing similar research. It's generally referred to what's called an internal water storage area, which is at the very bottom of the, the basin or the rain garden, you designed it to hold the recharge volume. So instead of the water going into the ground, you basically store it within the rain garden and then plant the rain garden heavily so that the plants soak up that water and that water is managed via evapotranspiration as opposed to infiltration in a, in a case where you have poor soils. So we require the waiver because we're not physically infiltrating it into the ground. But we are proposing to retain it, not discharge it from the site, which is one of the goals. And then instead of it going into the soil, it would be soaked up by, by the trees and shrubs and, and then evaporated or, or used up by the plant material. And then the, the other two standards related to water quality and peak rate control would be controlled by this basin in compliance with, with the code standards. Basically, from a water quality standpoint, the rain garden is beneficial then because we can trap the water quality volume required within this rain garden, filter it through that four feet of soil media. And that would also get, you know, partially soaked up by the trees, but anything that would be discharged from the site would have filtered through that soil and all that vegetated material. And then from a peak rate control standpoint, we are complying with the code and in fact, you know, exceeding the code. So we don't need any relief from that. But just for summary, you know, currently there's no stormwater on this property at all. So the benefit of doing this project is it, it brings us into oversight of your stormwater code and requires us to meet those standards and, and we are in fact even exceeding them. So, and the low level storms were twenty to forty-five percent reduction from your code requirement. And then in the upper storms of the hundred year, we're about a ten percent requirement. But your stormwater code already requires what we call a peak rate reduction built into it. So from the existing condition without any stormwater as there is today. And the low level storms were thirty-five to forty-five percent below existing flow off the site. And then in the higher level storms were, were ten to twenty percent reduction from the existing flow. So this project, even though we're, we're asking for a small waiver from the infiltration component, especially for the peak rate control, which is, you know, I know a lot of the concerns for stormwater and Radnor relate to flooding. You know, that relates a little bit more to the peak rate control side. We're able to, to, we believe provide great benefit to peak rate reductions off this, off this property. And then number three is more an engineering issue that I'll work out with Gannett's group on how we store the water and where we store and how we do the calculation. So we'll, we'll adjust the outlet structure accordingly and work with Roger's team to address comment three as well as the majority of sheet five. Those are all just engineering details with extra labels and extra elevations on the plan. So four through fourteen are well complies. And then number fifteen is just a procedural step where we also have to file a grading permit application, which we will do. Sheet six, the sanitary sewer is all just additional details and cleanups of sanitary profiles, which we will comply with. And then the general comments will submit to Shade Tree Commission. And number two is detailed parking structure plans, which will be submitted as part of design review board. And then we can also provide copies to Gannett's group. So I don't know if there's any comments on this letter or if we should just go to Gilmore's letter and, and then discuss everything at once.
Matt, you're muted if you're talking.
I apologize for that. Are there any other, do any other commissioners have anything to say at this point, or would it be okay to move on and come back with general comments at the conclusion?
We have some residents that want to make comments. When did they get that opportunity?
Mary, how do you want to handle that?
Well, that's up to you. But if they're making the comments when it's fresh in their mind, it might be better.
But how do we know that they're going?
For their comments, you're right.
Right. So maybe we should have the entire presentation and then go to our comments and resident comments.
I think I'll, I'll continue. There's not much to talk about in the Gilmore letter, so I can, I can cover the site plan changes and then I'll turn it over to, to Greg Richardson with TPD to talk about the traffic study comments. So the traffic study or I guess his letter. Section C relates to the requested waivers, which were copies of the items we already discussed in Roger's letter. Section D relates to D one relates to traffic impact study, which Greg can address. For comment two, D two relates to the parking stall waiver size. So we agree that we're removing that waiver request and we will increase the surface parking to the nine and a half by twenty. So that comment would be resolved by the change in that parking stall size. And then three and four are just plan labels for additional details and some clarification on ADA crossing ramp design, et cetera. So we'll comply with those. General comment E one relates to the third story of the garage. As we noted, we are going to remove any reference to the third story. So that comment should be resolved. Number two is the only one that relates in site plan changes. They requested that these two parking stalls immediately outside the two-way access from the garage be removed. So we will agree to to not have those as parking stalls and allow a little bit more separation and sight lines coming out of the garage in that location. So we agree to make that design change. Number three relates to turning templates through the garage. We did provide those. We'll clarify that in our response to, to Damon's group, but we believe that information was on the plan set, but we'll discuss that with him in our resubmission. Number four relates to ADA parking stall counts. Previously, when this was Penn Medicine, they striped some of these stalls along Radnor Chester Road as handicap, but they don't meet today's standards. So we agree to, we'll remove the handicap signage and the handicap paint markings. And not, we don't require those to meet any ADA code compliance. So we'll remove those as ADA stalls. And number five is just a construction coordination item. You know, once we get approval of the layout and the stormwater approach, et cetera. There is, I guess, some requests for some clarification on truck traffic during construction, which we can coordinate. Once we know that the layout is acceptable. And then number six is just a, a detail of the parking stall or the parking space paint coloring and widths, et cetera. So we can provide that detail as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Greg Richardson to discuss the traffic impact study comments.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, we do have, we've gone through the comments themselves and actually we've actually started to address Damon's comments regarding the traffic study. We don't believe there's anything in the letter that is earth shattering or, or, or at a point where we cannot achieve or satisfactory this, you know, to, to address the comments to Damon's. To address the comments to Damon's satisfaction. There are a lot of technical issues that were. Brought up in the comments regarding our traffic study and there will be some. Items that we probably, Damon and I will, you know, need to discuss just to get some clarification because I want to make sure. That we address his comments satisfactorily. So. With that being said, you know, unless you have any questions on the the traffic study itself or the comments themselves. I'm here to to answer them.
Greg, I I do have some questions and I'll let Damon talk. I mean, I I understand what you're saying. You're going to work these out so that when you come back before us. But I think in in speaking with some of the planning commission members and and residents. Everybody has, I I've read your TIS, but people have questions on the methodology used in obtaining counts. Because you know, one of Damon's comments is. Counts were conducted while the two fifty King of Prussia Road was operated at reduced capacity likely due to COVID policies. So could you, and then Damon has supplied a chart, a table. Noting traffic to include, I think. As opposed to just working things out with Damon and coming back, I I want to request that you step through these. For the planning commission and anybody who's watching from a traffic standpoint.
Yeah, Steve, that's a very good question. You know, again, we're living in some strange times and. Getting back to somewhat normal traffic conditions, but we're still not there and. We do in our traffic studies since the. You know, COVID pandemic is, we still continue to do our traffic studies to keep things moving, but. We have used the methodology and it's pointed out on pages three and four of the study of how we did. The counts and how we adjusted the volumes. We've been doing that. Again, since the very beginning of the COVID, when we did any counts that were after the shut during the shutdown. And getting back to normal. It's methodology that Penn Dot that we utilize in all of our Penn Dot studies. They've actually produced. Strike off letters and with the methodology. So we did address that, you know, just as a note when we did our counts. And then when we compared it with the previous counts that were done, you know, that we utilized, which were back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. And then were adjusted. And when I refer to those counts, those are some of the counts that were done for the new Penn Medicine building. We didn't see an appreciable difference in the traffic volumes. So that is addressed in the study. And, you know, the results we believe are are accurate when it comes to the traffic volumes.
So I I'll follow up with two other questions. Could you specifically address Damon's table? That he has on page three of five. And then specifically speak to any intersections where the level of service has dropped due to the proposed project.
Yeah, we believe we've addressed all of these scenarios and I and that was one of the items that, you know, we wanted to get some clarification. You know, from Dame David Damon on this because of, we thought we had addressed it. In the study. So maybe there was some. Miscommunication or the way we presented it. But we believe we we did provide the the analyses, especially the COVID adjustments. We use, you know, the traffic study that was done from Penn Medicine. If you recall, the this building was fully tented at the time. So that traffic study had the volumes, traffic volumes for when this building was fully occupied. So we worked with, you know, the analyses in that study, the traffic counts. Did some comparisons of the different scenarios that were in there and. We believe we, this is a very unusual traffic study. This is not like you have a brand new site, you know, virgin ground where you're. You know, you're you're totally brand new traffic. This traffic was here at one time. It just isn't here now because the building is not tented. So we believe we have addressed those these comments in these scenarios. And again, this is something that we. Just need to discuss with with Damon and just make sure that we're on the same page. And as far as the intersections again that were that have poor levels of service. A lot of these were are existing deficiencies out in the field at the intersection. I'm not a hundred percent sure that's the improvements that Penn Medicine. Had recommended in their traffic study were actually implemented and all they had recommended in their study was. Signals retiming at a few of the intersections, Matson Ford and at, you know, King of Prussia and Radnor Chester.
So they're they're in the midst of their. Traffic adaptive system. It's on monitor right now, so it hasn't been switched on, but I guess. So for my own edification. Damon has some pretty significant points and a somewhat lengthy portion dedicated to of his review letter dated. Cated to the traffic impact study. If I'm if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying let you talk with Damon and then you will address the. Whatever comments or less are left as opposed to stepping through this with the planning commission tonight.
Well, yeah, I be I I believe there's a lot of these comments can be addressed, will more or less will comply. There are the ones that you pointed out such as the levels of service and the ordinance, the way the. It reads is, you know, that if there's any intersection that's below a level of service C today. It's at Damon's question is what recommended improvements could be implemented. Certainly, we could provide that information, but. Unfortunately, the way the ordinance is written, it's saying that any intersections below level service C. Which these intersect this intersection, you know, Radnor Chester and. King of Prussia Road and Matson Ford, they do have levels of service that are below the sea without the building in place. And this was a condition that was there before the building, when the building was in. Full use. And certainly, you know, this is certainly, you know, ordinance that we haven't, that we do encounter. You know, regarding levels of service C because it's it's difficult to, you know. Address that comment sufficiently when the levels of service are already below that level. Only thing you could do is just remove traffic and that's that's not reasonable or feasible. In this world, you know, you can't remove traffic from a from an intersection.
Well, we would like to see your specific recommendations and if that, you know, as part of your response. To comply with the letter, whatever those recommendations may be.
Yeah, I I believe that certainly we could do that, you know, if we feel that, you know, if the study is helpful to the township to show that there are certain improvements that can be done. At the intersection. And, you know, they can be, you know. You know, if it improves the intersection, certainly, you know, these traffic studies that we do are tools to, they're planning tools to determine. Deficiencies at certain intersections and certainly we could work our way through that. But again, you know, these intersections are already at a level service C and it's it's hard to. Backtrack on volumes, if you know what I mean.
Hey Greg, Matt here. From my perspective, as a as a planning commissioner. I feel like I'm not, I'm not equipped enough because of, I I feel like this isn't clean enough for me because. I don't, I I'm trying to figure out what Damon's concerns are and I'm trying to figure out what. How you're going to address those concerns and I see you're trying, but I don't feel like, I don't feel like I'm equipped. I'm not a traffic engineer, so. I feel like I'm a little bit like, well, what am I supposed to say here? Because I'm not sure what to make. Here's what I'm not sure to make. I feel like this traffic study doesn't doesn't necessarily reflect. Reality because of the COVID stuff. For one, and the other thing was when two fifty was up and running full. Was one forty five up and running full?
No.
So this the 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 reality to me as as an idiot about about traffic. And trust me, the reality is Greg, so. If one forty five is running up is full and two fifty is running full. Does this traffic study reflect that given the COVID issues and? And I don't know what to say. I don't know what to, I don't know what to make of it. And and so then Damon is chiming in and I'm trying to figure out like. How you're going to answer what his concerns are given. That it's all changing because people are getting back on the road now and going to offices again by, you know, December, everybody would probably be back to sort of normal. So it's a quandary for me. I just, I feel like I don't know what to do with this traffic study right now. And that maybe that's on me, but that's how I feel. So I figured I'd say.
No, no, don't, 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 I mean, I always say if you have a driver's license in Pennsylvania, you're a traffic engineer, so. But, no, the the traffic study does address traffic conditions with this building being fully occupied. And with one forty five property being fully occupied. It does address the COVID. As I stated, we have a section we in the study that does address this. And so therefore. We, I, as I stated earlier, I think this is something that Damon and I just need to walk through. And make sure we're on the same page of with the methodology. And it's not unusual for a traffic study to be produced and. These kind of comments come up and working them through. I believe we're confident that. We addressed, you know, or did a traffic study that does address the, you know. The full use of this building as well as the full use of one forty five and with the COVID. And it looks like Damon's looking for some further information as far as, you know, what other, what improvements can be. Implemented to address, you know, both of those, both of the developments. We believe. The improvements were addressed in the one forty five study because it did have a fully tented building here at two fifty.
So the planning commission takes your input and is guided by the advice of its consultant. If Damon's not at a place yet where he's comfortable. That all of the requirements of the traffic study have been met, then. I think what the chairman is saying is he's concerned about moving forward with a plan on on a will comply basis. Until we know that Damon's going to agree with you that all these things have been properly addressed. And if I misstated your concerns, Mr. Golos, you just tell me, but that's what I.
No, that, no, what I, we've been through this before where we. We didn't approve, we didn't approve a plan because we felt the staff wasn't where they needed to be yet. And it wasn't, and it didn't feel clean. It did, it it felt like, well, we're proving something. We we all, we don't have our arms around it completely. The staff doesn't, isn't fully signed off and it just, it seems pointless to me to do that to. To do that. So and that I guess that's where I am because.
Sorry, I, this is Alex. I wanted to clarify something and and I think Greg explained it, but I I think. It might be a little bit confusing the way you're, the way you're responding to Greg's comments and I wanted to clarify this and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but. One forty five's traffic study, when before that was built. Two, two fifty was operational as Penn Medicine and one forty five King of Prussia Road was a proposed development. So that traffic study previously had two fifty fully occupied and operational. And the proposed increase in traffic related to one forty five King of Prussia Road. In that study, they recommended certain improvements. Now, X number of years later, we're in today, one forty five is now occupied. To the estimated proposed trips from that original study. And two fifty will be reoccupied back to the same level that it was in the original one forty five study. So our position is those recommendations are still the same because the condition is still the same. We're just refilling Penn Medicine to where it was when that original study was done. Steve noted that some of those recommendations are being implemented, but they're not complete yet, so we haven't seen the effects of them. But the recommendations are still the same from the one forty five study because that study originally. Had both sites fully occupied and it occurred pre-COVID. So all the information is there unless the comment, which we don't believe this is what the comment is, unless the comment is. Give me more recommendations, but. You know, Greg can answer this. I, my understanding is there are no more recommendations because they were all made in the one forty five study. And we're basically reiterating them here under the new study with our garage, but the recommendations don't really change.
Jump in here and and here's my question. So I understand what you're saying. I've read the report. But I I think it's only fair to the planning commission, right? So you're talking about things that they're not seeing on paper. My recommendation to the applicant is whether you do it now or or after Greg Richardson works with Damon Drummond. And goes through these comments and I'll gladly be part of that meeting. I think you you need, traffic is a very big concern in this quarter. It was for one forty five, it was for the other half of one forty five. One of the reasons why the traffic adapted is going in. But you're looking at a review letter, we're getting that you're going to comply, but you need to speak to our traffic consultant. And and Alex laid it out very well what it is, but I really think you need to step through that with the planning commission because I I don't think. What's being put forth tonight is enough for them to get their arms around. I apologize if I'm speaking incorrectly for the planning commission. Or if I'm misstepping, but that's that's the vibe I'm getting that you're trapped that Greg Richardson. Come back here or do it now, whatever, and really step through this because there's Alex answered some questions. But I think it's worth a bullet point review of the impact study, the comments, what you used, what you didn't use. What the build out was, address Damon's table. And again, I I may be speaking out of turn, but I I think the planning commissioner would appreciate that, but perhaps I'm off.
I mean, here real quick, just just to go through the table real quick. This was something we put together because we had some confusion of what was exactly in the report. I think this is mostly what Greg had in the report. But we wanted to state it because it was a little bit confusing. We're also make sure the planning commission understood what was in here and what the board and the boards understood. What a commission is also understood what was in here. The biggest concern we saw were the drops in level of service. Greg can touch on this probably particularly between existing and even the future and what the significant drops were. So that's something we can discuss a little bit more. I know there's a no bill condition that includes the one forty five King of Prussia Road, but that's. That's what we need to explain a little bit more. From this site, from what I gather, and Greg, you can correct me if I'm incorrect on this. It does not look like there's a change of use here, so there is pretty much the same traffic that. Was previously there and then there's redistribution because of the garage. That was the major change is here and. I'll let Greg chime in.
No, that's that's accurate and and I understand that. This the site, if the, if it was to. Be re-tended it a hundred percent and did not have a parking garage, the traffic volumes would not change. That and also that, you know, I I don't know a hundred percent from a legal standpoint, but I would think that. That if you don't, if you didn't have the parking garage and you re-tended to that building as is now, that. Really wouldn't even need a traffic study. Wouldn't be, we wouldn't be before you tonight. But I, you know, that is, we're we're not at that point. I mean, we know where where we are right now with the parking garage and. We have to satisfy your request. And again, everything that you've stated here tonight doesn't, isn't off the wall. It makes perfect sense. And just so you do know, in the traffic study, again, I just was looking through it while everyone was talking. We adjusted our traffic volumes by twenty seven percent upward. And thirty, that's in the morning and thirty eight percent in the evening upward. So we did address fully again, when I said that we addressed the the COVID adjustments to account for. Reduced traffic volumes in the areas. We did grow our volumes by, you know, a quarter and a third. To represent pre-COVID volumes. So, but I, well, I hear you loud and clear. I think we know. You know, again, I I think there's like two, maybe three of the comments that cannot be addressed here tonight. And and it doesn't sound like we're going to satisfy you at that point until we satisfy Damon, which is fine. And we're willing to do that. But, you know, it's from a, you know, I'll put on my planning commission hat. I'm on the planning commission in my township. You know, if it's certain, if it's something that we could, you know, move forward tonight, at least with, you know, preliminary, I think we've asked for preliminary final. I'm not going to try to speak out of turn here, but if it if it's something that we could. You know, get through tonight and, you know, have these issues addressed before final. Certainly, that's the township's prerogative. I I'm just throwing out a a mechanism to move this, you know, forward, move my client's project forward. I'm hearing silence.
Did you say something?
I don't think anybody.
It's a very, it's a very loud silence.
Maybe I lost connection because I was losing, uh, losing my screen here.
And Greg.
You know, can I just say something? I, 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 I really don't think we should be sitting here hashing out the nu- nuances of this without a clear recommendation from the staff. And I, and I kind of, yeah, I kind of find it, first of all, very hard to follow. And it's very frustrating to follow. And, uh, unless we can come to, somebody can set, uh, come with a clear presentation. And it, and it, it, it's very, it's, you know, I, I, I find it really quite frustrating. So I, you know, I'm not sure whether that comes from our staff or comes from, 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 uh, the, uh, presenters, but somewhere it should be a little more clear. I don't think it's our job to sort it out.
Steven, I totally agree with you. And I came on the planning commission, as you remember, right on top of 145. Yeah. And, and that, that, those presentations were like gigantic. I mean, the, the, what, what they, what people laid out in front of us was actually digestible. It was just the volume of it was, it was immense. But I feel totally different right now. I'm having a different experience. I'm lost in it. I don't know what to do. Um, and I think that I'm not, I'm not ready to approve anything right now.
Mr. Golos said, that was my point. I, I think the planning and to Steven's point, I'd already said it. I think the planning commission needs more information and I, I think in the form of a presentation. So if, if Mr. Richardson works with Damon to review, to re- review and or reduce the comments in the review letter, I still think the methodology and all needs to be stepped through for the planning commission because it's too nebulous right now for non-engineering folks to try to get their arms around. And that's just my, my recommendation.
And, and just to, to piggyback on that a little bit, I think it, everything you said, it's a two-pronged approach. It's not enough to have the presentation and it's not enough just to put Damon in a position where he's comfortable. I think most of the comments in Damon's letter have to be addressed. And then the planning commission has to get information on why Damon's reached a point where he can recommend approval. Like I think both of those things should happen.
I agree. I think at this point the plan's incomplete. Um, from a couple of different perspectives and then the traffic and the stormwater strategy too. I, I don't know if this step, how, how that is, uh, what the staff position really is on that either. So I'm, um, I'm curious to learn more, but I think, I think tonight I'm, I'm on the side of just erring with, uh, with caution, without approval.
Any other commissioners have thoughts on where we are?
I agree with, with Megan. And that we need to get a little more information and not try and solve it all.
I agree as well.
So may I, um, just, I guess, just for clarification. So is there a request and admittedly, we, we did get the review comments last week and we are working through the review letters, the request to come back after we've addressed all of the review letters, have a, a, a subsequent review letter and really walk through what, what if any are the remaining issues? And go through line by line.
Yeah, Joe, I mean, that, and exactly. And, and but, and when are you going before Shade Tree?
We were planning to submit. Um, we haven't submitted yet, Alex. We can, we can discuss that offline, but we were planning to go in, in front of them as soon as we can. So it, it may work out timing wise if we get in front of them this month that we were back in front of you, the, uh, July meeting.
That would be great because I think that I, I recognize like with the rain garden and some other things, there's some significant shade tree in, input that's coming for you guys. And it's all good stuff. But it would be great to have that in the pocket before we see you again.
We'll, we'll try to work with the applicant. That's a pretty tight deadline for Shade Tree, um, but we'll do our best to work with them. So if I can make a suggestion, Mr. Trainer, again, I think we're beating this to a dead horse. But instead of just addressing whatever the final review comments are and that Damon is satisfied, really need to give a little background to show the planning commission how you came up with this. Right? So the questions have been asked and I think we owe it to the planning commission to say, as Matt said, here's a presentation. Here's what we studied. Here's why we studied. Here's the assumptions we made. Here's the build out. Here's what 145 was at, all, all those good things. It just, it's just, and, and it's no, uh, disrespect to Mr. Richardson or you, it just, uh, or to your team. I think they need more.
I agree.
Understood.
And it needs to, and it needs to be accompanied by graphics that show the intersections you're talking about and the buildings you're talking about. And, uh, uh, so that, that would be really helpful.
Understood. Oh, as always, we appreciate your comments and we'll, uh, Steve and Damon will work with, with you. We'll go through with, with our team and address the comments to the letter and then also, um, go through and really meet to, to discuss any other remaining items. And then, um, you know, I think put it into, this is more direction for, for our team, Greg and, and Alex. When we come back and any remaining items, really go through and put it in a, in a plan that is, um, more digestible to the laypeople like me, uh, that aren't traffic engineers. So it's, uh, it's clear because I understood Matt that, you know, the, the concerns or confusion on how you adjust for COVID pandemic, making sure that, that it did get addressed for um, the new Penn medicine, medicine facility and this existing facility and so forth. And just make sure that it's, um, in, you know, in lay talk.
Joe, I think the only question I had, you know, I know we're coming back. There was a comment about the stormwater practice. Just to clarify, there, there's no real technical comments in Roger's letter other than details and, and labels, et cetera. Is there any input from the planning commission on the stormwater? Or you guys defer, you, you mentioned Shade Tree. So are you deferring the rain garden design to Shade Tree? Or is there additional information you guys are looking for? Cause there's not much to revise in Roger's letter. So I want to make sure I get you the information you're looking for.
Yeah, Alex, on Alex in terms of this.
It's not, that's not their purview, stormwater management.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Are, are we deferring to the board in Shade Tree? Or do you guys want us to discuss that further next month? Or are you, you deferring to the board since they handle the waiver requests anyway? All I can discuss more tonight, but the, I'm not going to have more information next month that I don't have tonight. That's why I'm trying to get an understanding of, of where we stand on all the topics. I understand the traffic, but there are also questions about stormwater. So.
Yeah. The only thing.
I know what you're looking for.
Alex, the only thing I would say to that, because I'm on the Shade Tree Commission is that the, the, you know, the whole rain garden concept is a place where you could put trees. I mean, it's a, it's a place on the property where you can plant.
There are trees. Yeah, we already have trees planted in there.
Okay.
So I would save the methodology for the board of commissioners. Alex, as you noted, they're the ones who are going to grant or deny your waiver.
Understood. Just trying to confirm.
Under, agreed.
Matthew, only some trees like it wet. I say, where are you, Virginia? Some will die. Some plants, it's.
Correct. Um, so where, where are we? Is there, should we hear from the public? Mary, Steve, at this point, if there.
Oh, sure. You have to take public comment.
Yeah, I just, Ian, is anyone out there?
Uh, yeah, we do have a public comment from Susan Stern.
Susan?
Yes. Hello, everyone. I don't know if I'm on camera.
You're not on camera, but we hear you.
Okay. So I'm Susan Stern. I live at 202 Midland Avenue. Uh, thank you. I've never, I've not commented at a planning commission meeting as zoom before, although I am well known to many of you on the commission. So it's nice to see all of you. Uh, I just wanted to comment briefly on this particular application. I, I had a very difficult time trying to orient where this proposed parking garage is on the property, which speaks to one of the waivers that is frequently requested and frequently granted. And in my opinion, um, detrimental to understanding the plan, and that is the waiver of the 500 foot area, you know, the, the perimeter of the property. I'm having a very difficult time understanding which corner of the property this parking garage is proposed because the school district abuts it and yet to my, for my view of the plan, I'm not able to discern where that is on this, on this plan. So I'm, I'm hoping that someone can perhaps screen share and pull it up and explain to me where the, where the bus depot and where the north side of the high school property adjoins this plan. Which I would have been able to see if you didn't submit a plan with, you know, without that aerial view or without the 500 feet, you know, features.
I can, I can share a screen. There was a graphic previously shared. Were you not able to see it when I shared it during my presentation?
Oh, I, I did. I do not see the high school property. I don't see the property owned by the school district depicted on the plan. That, that, and, and so maybe I'm missed.
Uh, you know, our, our charts are covering it. So the bus, I'm showing screen now, the bus depot. Oh wait, I apologize.
Right.
Yeah, this is the existing rendering. So here's the existing building.
Correct.
Radnor Chester to the left, King of Prussia to the top being north.
Right.
Radnor High School Bus Depot is to the east.
Correct.
And the proposed garage is in the southeast corner. So along the Loop Road directly across from the Bus Depot in the back corner, directly diagonal from the intersection of Radnor and King of Prusher Road.
Great. Thank you so much. So that actually speaks to two more questions I have because when you look at the actual plans, neither property, the high school and where the bus depot are identified on the plan as, as an adjoining property. But I'm more puzzled by how the zoning variance is to be 17 feet from Radnor Chester Road. And I'm, I'm just really trying to understand the calculation that you were looking for variance to be within 17 feet of Radnor Chester Road.
It's not, it's not 17 feet from Radnor Chester Road. It's 17 feet from the property line opposite Radnor Chester Road.
Thank you. And then 40 feet from the property line.
King of Pressure Road. So we comply with the front yard setbacks. We got variances for the side and rear opposite both those roads. So it's tucked in the back corner. And then relative to Radnor High School is actually not an adjoining neighbor because this property used to be part of the 259 parcel or they used to be um, a cohesive development. So our actual property line cuts inside the Loop Road and there's a small finger of 259 Radnor Chester Roads property that goes out to King of Prusher Road. So it's actually 259 that is the adjacent neighbor on the east. And then the bus depot is beyond. So that the bus depot is a neighbor to 259 Radnor Chester Road, not our property.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So is this proposed development actually incorporating a development of two properties, 250 King of Prusher Road and 259 Radnor Chester Road?
Now it's, it's solely contained within 2, 250 King of Prusher Road.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. So then the other thing, um, I appreciate you clarifying that, which I, again, it was just difficult to orient the property. Um, I, I, I'm not going to speak to a lot of things that I happen to think about the plan, but I, but I would say one of the things I'm struck by, and I'm offering this comment more to the planning commission as a general comment and less about, um, this particular plan. A number of years ago, when I was on the planning commission, we created that fee in lieu of parkland fee. And the intention was that we would recognize that certain, at certain times developers would have a plan. It would have its merits. It would have its detractors. Um, it would have its positives and negatives, but if they were not able to provide parkland that a fee in lieu of would, would allow them to contribute in a meaningful, positive way to the township. And I find myself thinking that perhaps the planning commission and the board of commissioners should consider something similar when, when applicants are not able to provide stormwater on site. Stormwater is a big problem in Radnor Township. I, I do have my concerns about how this project will affect King of Prusher Road and the adjoining and the adjacent properties. But I, you know, I'm going to put that to the side for the second and just tell you, I, I'm really glad you're not plant, planet, passing this tonight as a preliminary final. I do think the traffic is an issue. I want to get back to the traffic in just a moment. I do wonder whether or not the rain garden will be really truly sufficient. And I would offer that perhaps as a commission, you might want to consider talking with the board of commissioners about creating a similar fee in lieu of when applicants are unable to provide adequate storm water management on their property. Perhaps it, they, there should be a fee and they could contribute to a fund that would benefit the township in some other area. Again, that doesn't apply to tonight's property because their, their plan is already in, it's already, you know, in the, in the channel. But I, I do think that might be worth considering, uh, as a way to help the overall stormwater prob, problem in our township. Uh, and then the final thing I'll say is about the traffic. I was on the planning commission when 145 was being considered. Uh, I was on the planning commission when we actually created the amendment that allowed for 145 to be built in the manner it was built today. And as it relates to the traffic counts, 250 King of Prusher Road was not fully occupied when the traffic for 145 was being contemplated. So the traffic counts, and this was a big concern, uh, not, you know, of no one in particular, but it was a big concern because we knew that 250 had been, had been having declining tenant, you know, they, they were slowly getting people out of Penn Medicine at Radnor. And they were going to other places. And there was a, you know, difficulty trying to figure out how, just how busy and how full would 145 become. So I, I, I would just offer, I'm, I'm not sure. And I would ask, um, Mr. Drummond to, to consider whether or not the traffic counts that they might put forth as the 250, you know, already occupied building from a few years ago to just understand that that was not fully occupied. And that a big component of why, my understanding, why the, the garage is being proposed is that they would like to fully occupy and fully lease the building. And, um, you know, and that, so we can expect it to be a fully maxed out building and that was not the case a few years ago. I, I don't really have much more to offer beyond that. I, you know, I am concerned about the stormwater, but you all are very much on top of that and, and it has its limitations. Uh, so thank you for clarifying where the plan, you know, where the building is sitting on the plan. I, I do appreciate that. And I'm, I'm glad maybe it's going to get a little bit more of a review, uh, before it's considered for actual recommended approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Ian?
That was the only public comment.
So I think folks, we ought to table this tonight and see if we can get everyone back in July and have a full traffic presentation as part of that meeting. Anybody have any other thoughts?
I agree.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? I.
Hi. Hi.
Okay, Joe.
I hear everybody.
I think we all know what we, what we're looking for.
Yep. Thank you. We appreciate your feedback.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Greg.
See you next month.
Okay.
Uh, so folks, do I have a motion to adjourn? Or do we have any, well, we don't have any public comment. We don't have any new business. Steve, anything? Any words of wisdom as we close here?
Yes, sir.
Mary?
Nothing, Mr. Golos.
And Damon, you're, you're all set?
Got it.
All set.
Great. Okay, folks. Well, have a, have a nice warm night. And we'll, 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 I'll see these folks at Shade Tree, I guess. And then we'll see you guys.
Die down. Like I, does anybody have them at their house yet?
No secret. But Washington, Washington DC is getting hit hard.
It's, they're, they're crazy. It's a, it's, it's a din and. It's, they're, they're crazy. It's a, it's, it's a din. And now they're, now they're completely quiet. So I guess they go to bed at night. Thank goodness.
All right.
All right. Good night, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.